During the winter?
Oh, I've been enjoying it, yep.
It's spring now, so it's good.
Couple of.
Next week's supposed to be cold again, not as.
Not that much colder.
Don't say that Eric, they'll jinx us if we.
Well, whatever.
Just kind of.
It's cold again, I said, right?
Yeah.
It's gotta be better than the last couple of weeks.
I got some knees in the door yard, so I can walk out there and flip flop in shorts.
Your white flip flops?
My white. I don't know if I flip flops, I have to get them though.
We saw.
Jesse, did you turn on the?
Yeah.
Okay. I think we've got five o'clock, I'll call the meeting to order today, Monday, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, roll call, we have Selectman Howdy Goodman, Eric Eaton, Mackenzie Jewett, Kevin Buck, myself, Jamie Thurlo, Town Manager Jesse Dunbar, and Town Clerk Sarah Abbott. Adoption of agenda, is there anything anyone would like to change on the agenda? Alright, we have approval of minutes, uh, with the minutes from February tenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from February tenth, twenty twenty-five, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Next, approval of warrants. We have warrant number eighty-one for eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents, eighty-two for four hundred forty-one dollars ninety-six cents, eighty-three for five thousand eight hundred thirteen dollars and six cents, eighty-four for one hundred nineteen thousand dollars even, uh, eighty-five for one hundred seventy-one thousand nine hundred forty-three dollars and twenty cents, eighty-six for sixteen thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and four cents, eighty-seven for eighteen thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-four cents, and warrant eighty-eight for forty-one thousand thirty-eight dollars and forty-three cents.
Make a motion to approve warrants eighty-one through eighty-eight.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve warrants eighty-one through eighty-eight, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have regular business. Um, first thing we have is warp and facilities ordinances. Do you want, um, do you wanna try to give a brief explanation, Jesse, or?
Yeah, if you want, I can provide just a brief explanation and then Tyler can provide any backup information needed or requested. Um, so the change to the warp, um, and facilities ordinance is just that one there on the front. Um, marine products permits, um, those are for the large trucks that sit on the warp to buy, um, marine products. Uh, there was no language in the ordinance limiting that number. There is, has always been a physical limit of three, um, but there's nothing in there to kind of back up the harbor master, um, enforcing that limit currently. Um, so we put in some language to limit it to three, um, the priority going to current permit holders in good standing. Um, and then there's some language around, um, that they must purchase or may not purchase goods from sellers that do not hold the valid warp use permit, or failure to comply could result in a loss of their warp permit. Um, Tyler can elaborate if needed, but we ran into the issue, um, or thought we would run into that issue this summer with some fishermen that don't hold warp use permits who resisted getting more fuse permits and may potentially still try to sell to the trucks sitting on the warp.
No, that's spot on, it basically, you know, the, most people we have come down are really easy to work with and they have no resistance, but we have those few that do put up a good fight. I just really need that backing and I think, uh, this is the perfect way to have that backing. When I say something to somebody and they wanna say, you know, the, yeah, not a problem, I have that. That backing through the ordinance, so if you guys have any questions, that's pretty much it.
So. It looks like it's putting it on the buyer, but you're the one that's gonna be.
Absolutely, and we treat the buyer the same way that we treat anybody else, whether it be a fisherman or anything that holds a current permit, so I highly doubt a buyer is gonna risk, you know, six out of seven hundred fifty dollars, which is peanuts comparative to what they actually purchased throughout the year to fund their business, whether it be RBR or BCA. Um, you know, I doubt they'll risk that for a simple, hey man, I can't have you buying from such and such until they gain the permit. I will let you know soon if they do.
So you're gonna be responsible to keep them up to date, that was the only problem I saw.
Which is not a problem because I'm usually going down there and getting yelled at, trying to be as professional as possible answering that back. So this just gives you a little bit more backing than a worth.
And that is kind of the reasoning for the wording of, you know, under direction of the harbor master. Basically, it'll come up when the harbor master tells them, please don't rob from some, some, you know, because they don't hold a valid permit.
How many trucks usually get a permit?
For?
Three, it's always only get three, yeah.
It's always been three on the warp, this just sets that in stone that there's only three.
Cool.
Yeah.
And I can already see how you thought of it after I stopped earlier that, um, you'll wanna start a waitlist for, for buyers, cause there's, there will be a couple, you know, I can already see someone will be just waiting for another person to be.
Yeah, for sure, and then like we talked, absolutely, we've talked, uh, I've, I, we talked about a couple of the names and, you know, I've been communicating with them, letting them know, and whether it be Sealco or Bass Harbor, and that's on the list, you know? And it might be worth setting up that actual physical list and a mental list, you know?
Cause the second that one of these people give it up, you know, decide not to, or for whatever reason, then you know you're gonna have fifty phone calls, I was the first phone call, I was, yeah.
I'm with you, so that might be a great idea, if you'd like it.
Do something like you do on the, the mooring list, small fee, you don't stay on the list.
Lot smaller, thankfully.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, the other thing, um, when you're ready, if you don't have any changes, um, with these ones, you have, it's up to you guys, you have the time to place it on the ballot, um, or open town meeting. Um, you'll have some changes coming to you next month, um, regarding land use that will have to go on open town meeting due to the timeframe, but this one you still have time to, if you make the motion tonight, to place it on the ballot. So, you can choose whatever option you prefer.
What do you want, Sarah? Do you want it on, I mean, it's counting for you guys.
I have to do the ballot in case, so. If we need reference and questions on there, I mean, that's really no problem.
Okay. I mean, I don't care either way, really.
I don't think anybody will have any issue with any of those changes, I mean, those are really good changes, yeah.
Tyler, how much does the, uh, day use permit and how much is the commercial service permit?
The day use permit is a hundred thirty-five for, for anybody, you know, and then, what was your other question?
The commercial service permit.
Commercial, six seventy-five for commercial, so you're, you're a commercial, you're saying?
For the year. No, I'm not talking about me, I'm talking about the ordinance.
The ordinance, yeah, commercial like yourself is where I'm getting at, six seventy-five, yeah.
Um, I know you just ran into some issues this year with, uh, vendors like doing repairs on boats.
Yeah.
Complaining because, you know, the boat owner has the permit and then they come down to change a belt for them and then they, they can't and, you know, the, the fee ends up being more than that job or whatever, you know? I just didn't know if we could think of a way to work with them a little bit more.
Well, I've been. Absolutely, and I've been playing that off one or two ways, which is the one or two ways that should be played off, you know? I'll give that option to, you know, I can name multiple people, I want businesses, companies, whatever, maybe commercial entities that are working on our vessel, six seventy-five for being, you know, let's make it work, let's make it happen. Or, um, the fisherman can pay the hundred thirty-five dollars to get their vessel looked on today. Most generally, that fisherman's just kicking butt and doing that hundred thirty-five dollars a day, I feel bad, needs to be paid for.
Yeah, I mean, that's really the way, that's a good way to do it.
Yeah, you know, because the problem being is with, we have two commercial entities right now that are doing one electrical and one just, you know, boat mechanic, doing business right now, and the reason they don't wanna pay that six seventy-five right now is because it's for such a short time, and I understand that, and we don't prorate. So if they paid that permit right now, then, you know, it's due in September again. So, I understand the complaint on it, but again, I gave every opportunity in September and let them know.
Yeah, you gotta do it.
Let's take the whole year right now and we'll be good.
Yeah, I see that there is a complaint, some guy's only gonna be down there twice a year doing stuff, which is what the fishermen pay for, they don't wanna take their boat somewhere else and.
And not that every fisherman is happy to fish out another hundred thirty-five on top of a, what, four or five thousand dollar hydraulic setup or whatever, I mean, P, it doesn't matter, but unfortunately, that's the way it's gonna be.
Yeah, that works alright.
And I think that Tyler's right, I think it has to be, I don't think it's a good idea to start changing things around a little bit or working, if you work with people and, and try to, you know, it can vary from person to person. I know I've been.
No, yeah.
We have to pay permits just like you do and, uh, you could have to work on someone's boat as part of it, like that's part of the deal. And, uh, if you're not willing to pay it, then don't use it at all.
I was just wondering what the fee was, cause if it was like
Crazy.
An outrageous amount, then we might wanna look at.
No, I'm, I'm a hundred and ten percent with you and it's still like you say, a hundred thirty-five bucks. Well, none of us are rich enough to throw a hundred thirty-five bucks out the window, but, I mean, six hundred thousand dollar boat, a hundred thirty-five bucks shouldn't be crazy.
Wow, I mean, that's the fuel bill to steam it around to somewhere else, you know?
Yeah, yeah, I'm with you, yes sir, any other questions on that?
Um, I made a motion to approve and sign the, uh, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five version of the warp and facilities ordinance order to be placed on the town meeting warrant as an open warrant article and, uh, recommend passage or adoption.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five version of the warp and facilities ordinance in order to be placed on, did you say town meeting warrant?
Yeah, as, as an open.
As an open. Open warrant article and, uh, yeah, make recommendation of passage. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, okay, next we have harbor management board dinner.
So on the harbor management, um, on the first page there, um, that change um, has to do with moorings not being maintained by the mooring owner. The current language, um, lays out what their duties are to maintain them and, um, correct any defects, um, but occasionally we found in the past that that still is not done and the town has had to step in and do payments to prevent, you know, further issues with other boats or other moorings. Um, so this is adding language specifically allowing in the ordinance, the town to step in and do that when necessary and for the cost to be, um, paid back to the town from the owner, um, prior to, prior to obtaining a permit, paying a permit. Second page is just removing the fee like we like to do with our ordinances, replacing it with, um, second by, by the select board. Um, on the third page has to do with the mooring assignments, um, adding language that in the section where it says that they have to be used, um, if they're not used for at least thirty days, adding language that they be used by the registered operational vessel on the application. And I'll let Tyler go into that further, uh, in a second. And then on the other page, under abandonment, adding mooring here listed in the list of things under that definition. It's currently not in there, um, and that's it, so I'll let Tyler fill in. Um, any details to turn in a little too?
Yeah, gentlemen, so basically we can start with this one here, the reassignment of moorings, that's what I'm looking at. Um, that's kinda, you really gotta focus on two words, uh, the operational, uh, in the, the operational vessel on that mooring, you know, that, that, that operational part, you know, it needs to be an operational boat to think of it being, you know, a random boat floating out there. Um, and it needs to be the vessel that is on that application on that mooring, you know what I mean? We're having just a skiff ring, skiffs out there and it, it's just, you know, people are finding a gray area, for lack of better terms, a loophole that is kind of clogging up our mooring field right now. And our, uh, our mooring waiting list is quite extensive, so we're trying to keep it moving and trying to keep the harbor as functional as possible, so, you know, that registered and operational, there's the two focuses on that ordinance addition. So, and if you have any questions on that at all, if you want.
It's, I think, correct me if I could be wrong, um, it's allowing, um, you know, you can't obviously sublease your mooring, but if you let somebody use your mooring for free, then they can.
Yeah.
And so that's slowing down mooring waitlists because somebody's can hold their mooring and let somebody who's fifteenth on waitlist just have it and they continue to pay the hundred dollars while the fifteenth person gets to use it. So if it, by adding the, the registered, and it, we're still the thirty days, but, but the registered.
Do you have to keep track of the thirty days?
I'm sorry?
You have to keep, you keep track of the thirty days. That's fine.
Most of it's fairly obvious, isn't it, though?
Most of it is, I mean, once you get to, I mean, I've been out, been out of this harbor ten years, which is nothing compared to a lot of this background here, but you get really.
The only problem I've got, some of us are accused of having boat addictions. And sometimes, you know, maybe if you fall on the dock and stole it from the same person.
And I'm glad you don't have that, that is something that I wanna clarify and I did clarify, you know, harbor master discretion everything in, in this, in this ordinance in particular, you know? I'm not upset, but it's well unfair, that's not why we're doing this, you know? If Art Payne, he puts his boat on that mooring, set it up and then he's gone everywhere and then now, I'm not gonna tell Art, hey, your mooring's gone because you weren't there exactly thirty days, that's not my role, not my goal with this. This is just to have some kind of backing to keep this mooring field not so clogged up and congested with boats and moorings that aren't even you.
With a rowboat on there for thirty days out of the year.
I'm so sorry?
With a rowboat on there for thirty days out of the year.
And I, Eric, I know you've seen it, you know, so, I mean, this is kind of backing for, for myself and in future harbor masters for that instance, you know, keep that in mind with all these ordinance. This isn't a, a Tyler particular ordinance change, it's the harbor master change for all harbor masters current and future.
And it'll be a lot easier for you too, especially in the commercial zones in the harbor, if, uh, there's a boat on there, on the mooring that is not tied to the lobster license. Someone has a lobster license tied to their boat, they have to have that boat on the mooring for thirty days. And that's a straightforward, I mean, it's, it's real basic.
Right. And like we spoke about also, you know, A-zone in our mooring field is commercial only. So, I mean, it changes a little bit there to where it obviously has to be just commercial, so that changes a little bit on that, um, to that registered vessel on the morning. Most people already know that, so that's something you scale plus addition, but yeah.
And if you're, if you're like Kevin and you have like a half a dozen sailboats, then maybe, when you, when you write down for the application, write the name and then write like the section, and then, and then write, I have many more.
They won't let me put my boat, my silvers up in the vehicle.
They won't now, now.
You've got a nice center console too, don't you? Still owe me for that battery saving.
Oh, that's right.
Thank you, by the way.
Any more questions on that before I move on to the next? Perfect, okay, so the inspection floats and lobster cars, uh, you know, that addition, um, like Jesse explained, that, that's basically just again, the backing for the town and the harbor master. So, you know, if we do, if I notice something is astray to safety paramount at this job. So if a vessel looks like it's gonna break off its mooring or anything like that, a car or anything, and cause any kind of a hidden distance head on the road, and the owner of said mooring or car doesn't agree that it needs to be fixed, I can go out there and fix it and he can be responsible, he, she can be responsible for, you know, that price into that. This has some legal backing for that, um, I mean.
Yeah, in the past, it's, you know,
Yeah, we've done it in the past.
We've, we've had to do it occasionally and it's something that if we really feel is gonna cause a huge issue, I mean, it's not a huge expense to the town, so we're not gonna say, no, just leave it, we're not spending the hundred seventy-five bucks to, you know, whatever. Um, so we've done it, but we'd like to have it in here, but explicitly laying out that we can do that and can reduce, you know, the fees.
Again, this.
We can try now, but there's nothing that says they have to because that's the one thing I've had, um.
I think to help save yourself from getting into the argument with people that I feel your mooring needs to be done, you need to say every three years, you need to show proof of a mooring inspection.
Yeah.
That's what all the other towns do, every three years minimum, and that's a good number, um, cause half inch chain, you know, three years.
It is two years in our ordinance.
Is it already in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, that being said though, Eric, you know, you're a huge help, uh, in a multitude of other people. If I ever have a question, Eric, when's the last time you remember servicing that, if you did, or vice versa? Like, I have a bunch of different avenues to travel down before I even approach that person about that.
With the other towns and stuff, it, it should be this way with our town, which we try to do it, but it's the owner's responsibility to provide you with an inspection sheet that says, okay, it was done this day and here's the details.
Yeah.
Cause they get that inspection sheet from myself and the other companies around. So, uh, yeah, as long as the, you have the two year or three year, then if they fall within that, the problem is you don't have real accurate records, you're not getting those sheets from everybody.
Right.
Um, so when they register their mooring, you should say, hey, I need your last inspection sheet and then it's just gonna make my phone blow up, which sucks, but. But, you know, it'd be nice to have better records so you can go into your Excel sheet and say, oh, so and so's was done five years ago.
I couldn't agree more.
It, it's just, it's hard to keep up with that and get everyone to send it in, but if you could try to each year during mooring registration, say, hey, bring your last inspection sheet in and.
Right, it's not gonna be an overnight thing, but, uh, definitely something that I, I would like to focus on. You're a hundred percent right on that, because having that record, whether it be a physical or, uh, an online copy or whatever it may be, having that record to reference back to when that mooring was last serviced or just information on it, what the stone is, what the chain installed and so forth, it would be a massive help, so you're a hundred percent.
I don't know if you've seen, uh, Town of Mount Desert's system, their new system for, they have, it's all online, like.
Online moorings?
Yeah, so you go, it sucks, it's terrible, but, uh, you can, you can go in and pay your fee, which is a pain, it doesn't really work that well and put your information in, but I think it takes a little work off the harbor master.
Absolutely, uh, it, it does, and you know, I just had a meeting with Matt, the, uh, the guy that runs that whole deal, and it just, you know, for what our harbor is, I feel, and, and, you know, I just don't think it fits us, like.
Oh, no, it's not gonna work for us, but I'm just saying, if we can, we can get into some sort of program to make it easier for people to give you the information that you need for your records.
I'll bolt one. I'm gonna give you your stuff.
Justin was, I remember talking to him about it a few years ago, he was trying to think of ways and there's still a lot of people that change their own top chain and stuff like that, and I was like, well, even if they just gave you a receipt of where they bought the chain or whatever, like, that's fine too, just as long as someone's making an attempt, because you know that there's a lot of people that haven't changed them for six, seven years out there and it's fine in some circumstances where they're sheltered, but other spots, it's, you know, one bad storm, be like dominoes.
Right, those records, um, I think the biggest help that I really lack in not having those records are just the simplicity of having what's there.
Yeah.
Whether it be, you know, someone else has taken that, you know, spot and I'm unsure, okay, what size vessel can actually fit on that stone? You know, for the most part, I obviously know, but there's circumstances that I get into where I'm like, well, Jesus, what is that stone? You know, I got people calling me actually, captains, at the last week, hey, you know what size stone I have?
No, cause you didn't send me your records last time you had it serviced, yeah, so.
That, no, you're a hundred percent right. Yeah, I agree, guys, well, if there's no more questions about the ordinance changes and everybody agrees, thank you very much, appreciate you.
Sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the May twelfth, twenty twenty-five version of the harbor management ordinance and to be placed on the town meeting warrant as written, as open, town meeting, sorry, yeah.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve and sign the, uh, May twelfth, twenty twenty-five version of the harbor management ordinance order to be placed on town meeting warrant as a open warrant article and what about the recommendation? Do you want us, you didn't mention that in the case, we recommend passage?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, thank you Tyler, looks good.
I'm gonna go home, ladies and gentlemen, save your time.
Hey, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, Tyler?
That came with a truck too, Eric. Uh, dedication of the town report is next, anybody come up with any ideas?
How about the residents of town?
Did you say the fire department had somebody who was?
Oh, the fire chief did let me know that, um, Dudley Coriam has retired from the fire department.
That's right, he told me that, so, yeah, I'll be.
So Keith had mentioned if we hadn't picked that one yet, you could consider that.
Yeah. It's fun to make, yeah. Any other ideas?
When do you have to know, what's the, now, this is what you would like?
Yeah.
I also need my letter from the select board still.
No.
I did it last year.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did.
He sneaks out of it, it's.
Yeah, I know, it's tricky, not that she.
She's still defined it.
Yeah. You got funny at heart, don't worry.
That's true.
Is there any, do you want us to wait and have any better ideas, can we wait till next Monday, cause we have another meeting, or?
If you want to.
Well, I just didn't know.
She just said no. You see her staring at me?
Too, too bad.
Whatever you guys want.
Monday's fine, she's not busy. I don't have any great ideas, so.
Okay.
I don't think it's really.
The residence isn't a terrible idea, like, the whole, we have probably done that before, yeah, probably. Dudley's a good idea.
Next week.
Next week, okay.
Okay.
One more week to think about it and that's it, deadline's next week, no more. Look, she's giving us the, yeah, now we're in trouble.
He'll have his letter too, Sarah.
Yeah, I'll make sure, and Jesse will have his. Alright, next we have a quick claim deed.
Um, so this is a quick claim deed for a tax lien that was filed, um, back in two thousand ten that did not get discharged after payment was made and the tax collector has verified that the payment was indeed made and there's no reason not to issue the deed.
I make a motion to sign a quick claim release deed to Benjamin Hodgson and Benjamin Hodgson the second for one property located at fifty-two Hodgson Road, Tax Map eleven, Lot thirty-two C, since all assessed liens, fees, and costs have been paid.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to sign a quick claim release deed to Ben Hodgson and Ben Hodgson the second for one property located at fifty-four Hodgson Road, Tax Map eleven, Lot thirty-two C, uh, since all assessed liens, fees, and costs have been paid, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Alright, next we have town meeting board.
Um, alright, over the last couple of weeks, I have continued the FY twenty-six budget work, wrapping that up, uh, this week and for your meeting next week, um, the office staff has been. Um, alright, over the last couple weeks, I have continued the FY twenty-six budget work, wrapping that up, uh, this week, and for your meeting next week, um, the office staff has been busy, um, with DMV reports, um, and, uh, voter updates, public works, has been doing with plowing and sanding, road cleanup, work on truck nine's plow, work on truck three's sander, receiving salt deliveries, um, and some sand deliveries, uh, moved traps from the school, um, from the Christmas tree, uh, worked on truck four, um, and pull up some assistance with that. Um, the new truck tire on truck three, and working on the other two small sanders, and, um, pushing back snow around town. Harbor master is busy with wharf cleanup, um, cleaning up snow from, working on the new office, still trash cleanup, and, um, catching up from his vacation last week, and over the next few weeks, I will finish the FY twenty-six budget work and attend the new town's meeting.
Okay, thank you, Jesse. Suggestions for the next meeting? I know, Sarah, besides the dedication page, I can already see we're, I feel like we're in trouble. Date of the next meeting?
I motion to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, March third, two thousand and twenty-five, at five P M. at the town office.
Second. Been moved and seconded to confirm the date of the next meeting for Monday, March third, twenty twenty-five, five P M. at the town office, is there any discussion? All those in favor? Last, we have an executive session by the tax acquired property.
I make a motion to go into executive session as permitted by one MRSA four oh five dot six dot C, a consideration of the condition, acquisition of real property, of real, a personal property permanently attached to a real property, or interest therein, but disposition of publicly held property, or economic development only, and premature disclosures, disinformation would prejudice the competitive or bargaining position of the body or agency, as permitted by MRSA four oh five dot six dot C.
Second.
Is there nothing that?
Yeah, that was the worst.
Yeah, that one, that's unusual, but that's not, I don't think that's the right word.
It's been moved and seconded to go into executive session, title tax acquired property is rented by Kevin, is there any discussion?
Do you want to get through it?
Yeah, no, no, they're not gonna reread that. Do we need, uh, Sarah in this, okay, they will invite Tyler, Sarah, have it in this?
I think I'm stuffing my toes there.
Oh, hey.
Is there any discussion?
My scribble, no.
All those in favor? Hey, mention Kevin.
Sorry. I'd happily turn it over to you.
That's okay.
Okay.
I'm kind of enjoying our setting these days.
Alright, we're out of the executive session at five forty-five.
Okay, I make a motion to authorize the treasurer to dispose of, um, after consult, consultation with the town attorney, of the tax acquired property located at Map eleven, Lot twenty-five dash O one. Is that so?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to authorize the treasurer to, um, dispose of property, um, located Tax Map eleven, Lot twenty-five dash O one, and to consult with the town attorney, um, as needed to help. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion adjourned?
Second.
All those in favor?